Good evening. Welcome to the February 8, 2022 combined work session in regular in-person and virtual school board meeting. The first item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by the Bywood Elementary School students Adonia Daniels, David Tito, and Gerardo Lucian.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, students. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Bywood Elementary School principal Ms. Kristin Mann and lead teacher Janet Newby on team houses.
Evening, school board.
Evening, school board president Brown, vice president Fields, fellow board members, superintendent Dr. McGary, family, friends, fellow administrators. My name is Kristen Mann and I am the proud principal of Bywood Elementary. I am here with fellow scholars to present two items to you of things that we are doing at Bywood Elementary. The first is our house teams, a fun and new way to engage kids in learning. And our second is our Skills for Scholars Club. I hope you all enjoy our video.
The house system is like when you work together with somebody and they will like help you out.
So I started doing it last year because when we were virtual, we weren't a classroom community and I was trying to still make the community. And it went really well. I saw that the students were cheering each other on. I thought it would just be like a fun way for them to earn points like class dojo, but then once I found out like how serious the students take it, I started talking about to other people and I was telling Kristen about it and she was so excited about it. So then she wanted to pilot it in more classrooms.
Ms. Mann approached me to implement the house system and I was so excited. They have four houses. Guinness, Tharos, Quantum, and Gloria.
Gloria means grit.
Tharos means courage.
Guinness stands for kindness.
And Quantum means respect.
They were really excited at first. We had a big rollout presentation and it came up on the board and we did the drum roll and then their name popped up.
It was really interesting working with the new people.
They sit next to each other and they earn points together. They cheer each other on. So it's like how it was when we were virtual, but it's better now.
The first couple of days, they were, you know, very excited and they wanted to do a house challenge right away.
Every week we have a house challenge and we have to all work together and whoever works together the best gets like a bunch of points.
Mainly when you are good and follow the rules, you will get house points.
And at the end of the week, whoever has the most points gets a prize.
Whoever's in the first place, they can get lunchroom skill pens, switch their seats, go in the comfy chairs, get a pen, or get like permission to not have homework when you go home.
But it doesn't matter about the prize. It matters if you're being respectful or not.
And then at the last Friday every month, I got myself into having house parties. They loved the house parties that we do when we were virtual. So I was like, wow, I have to make this better and bigger now that they're in person.
We have music. We have disco lights.
The students cheer each other on. They find out which house came in first, second, and third place.
We do a Bywood run. We were doing Fortnite sight words.
They're really learning that you might not always win, but it's important to try your best and to cheer each other on. So it's also building like the classroom community.
I like it more than a normal classroom because it adds more excitement to being good. You get rewards and you get to do a lot of cool stuff because you're being good.
It makes me have a better behavior and I get to work with new people in my house.
It's really building that relationship with them peer to peer.
And the goal is to eventually make it school-wide so that all students in the Guinness house are able to represent their house.
Like a student that's in second grade that's in the House of Courage will form a relationship with a student who's in fifth grade in the House of Courage. So it's cool. It's like a buddy system and they all feel like they're a part of something bigger than just like themselves and bigger than their classroom. So it's cool.
Skills for Scholars Club is for fifth graders, basically just giving them some tools that they wouldn't regularly get during the school day. Even at the elementary level, it's important for them to be able to have the opportunities to, you know, do fun extracurricular activities even outside of the school day and not have to wait till they're in middle school or high school. The kids came in the cafeteria. They didn't even know what to expect, but knew it was something fun and engaging. And we presented this opportunity for just after-school activity outside of, you know, the school day to get them active and learn some new skills. There was interest right away. As soon as we were done with the presentation, they were raising their hands. They're like, when do I sign up? When we get the permission slip? They wanted to join the club. You still have to follow the three Bs now.
You have to be very respectful, responsible, and safe to get the permission slip because if you did not all of those three Bs, then you won't be able to join.
So me, Mrs. Powell, Mrs. Mann, we sort of kind of just came together. We met one afternoon and just thought like, okay, so how are we going to break this down month by month? Because it runs from January to May. The staff, we were nervous because first we had so many more students sign up than we had anticipated. So that was awesome, but really nerve-wracking because we had all these students staying after school for the club, but we had a lot of fun things planned. So for the first one, just starting like relatively small with two things.
First, we went into the cafeteria. We learned how to do self-defense, like the shuffle, I think it was called.
One of our teachers, Mr. Mercario, he was so willing to come in and help out. And Janet Newby, our lead teacher, she's into kickboxing. So it was really awesome to get them two involved and teach our students. They loved the martial arts self-defense class. And then also we had our principal, Mrs. Mann, come in and she taught communication skills.
It's like teaching yourself how to speak in front of people, like how to handshake, not just like handshaking and your hands go down. If you keep your hands up and shake your hands, that's how you show respect. And also speak correctly, like don't be like, oh, hey, my name's Gerard Alon. Yeah, like that. Speak like you really mean it, like, hi, I'm Gerard Alon Lucian and I'm here to introduce myself for Schools for Scholars Club.
I even got a chance to public speak just a little bit up there with them. So I think it was a learning experience for me as well. So I can only imagine what it was like for the fifth graders that participated in it. We have a lot of things planned for the future. We're going to do some basketball. We noticed that a lot of students, they like to ride bikes. So one of the teachers said they would offer to do a training on how to fix a bike. You know, when a chain falls off, sometimes we don't know how to get back. So I think that'll be fun. Yoga and meditation we have. We have just STEM projects that is going to be incorporated. So it's just going to be a lot of fun. I just hope they gain the experience, just at least like doing something once because when you experience good things, you tend to remember them so that they'll take them along their way.
I hope to gain more confidence because if I don't have any confidence in me, then I won't be able to do the things that I need to do.
I look forward to the rest of the Skills for Scholars Club and I hope that in the future, maybe this can open up many doors for even other elementary schools as well.
Thank you. I have to be honest. Thank you for your applause, but the true critiques is going to come in tomorrow because I have all of my fifth graders watching tonight and they are going to give me a report card on how I did in my public speaking tonight. So please have your thoughts with me tomorrow because they're very honest. Right now I have my fifth grade scholars here who would like to present and use some of those skills that they learned. Fifth graders, you ready? Gerardo, you ready? All right. Thank you, scholars. You did a great job.
Thank you very much, Bywood. You did a fantastic job. Kristen, I'm looking forward to my turn being one of your, doing your STEM project with your scholars, students in a couple of weeks. So looking forward to that. I'm really excited based on what I've seen. Thank you. All right. The third item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Aronomic Elementary School principal, Mr. Joshua Rehack on the accomplishments of student council.
All right. Good evening, President Brown, members of the board, Dr. McGary, fellow administrators, family and friends. My name is Josh Rehack and I have the privilege of serving as the principal of Aronomic Elementary School. I do have to first off tell you how nice it is to be back here in person. My presentation last year consisted of me at my dining room table with my stock Upper Darby photo up here on the presentation board. And I do want you to know, that shouldn't be nerve-wracking, but you know, in a household with two of my own children and the fear of having them run through the house while I'm mic'd up, this is much more soothing for me. So thanks for having me and welcoming me back. I stand here tonight to show off the amazing accomplishments of our Aronomic Student Council. After a year hiatus, it's so refreshing to be back to our Aronomic roots and find creative ways of making a difference within our community. At Aronomic, in addition to the academics that are taught in our classrooms each and every day, we believe it's necessary to teach and model service to others, being active community members and lifelong leadership skills. Under the leadership of three amazing, hard-working professionals, our fourth grade team consisting of Mrs. Pierce, Mrs. Coyle, and Ms. Schaefer, and obviously a bunch of awesome third, fourth, and fifth graders, the Aronomic Student Council has led three successful drives to start the first semester. And I'm going to take a minute and brag a little bit. This October, our student council came up with the idea of Socktoberfest. And that is an opportunity where we collected over 1,100 pairs of fresh socks for the Upper Darby Food Bank. I will tell you that the Upper Darby Food Bank was amazed at how excited members of our community were to receive, you know, a gift of free socks. And I'll be honest, our students were so amped to run this drive. In November, we had a canned food drive where we collected 1,300 needed pantry items and that was donated to the Upper Darby Food Bank. And also with the help of our social worker, Mrs. Hensel, families throughout our school community were also served. In December, our student council organized a CHOP fundraiser where we raised over $660 for the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. And I'll be honest, that's not bad for a small school of only 275 kids. So our kids, our student council, our teachers are so excited to be able to provide for our community, to come together as an organization, and to become lifelong service members. In addition to the numerous drives, the student council continues to brighten the days of their classmates with birthday acknowledgements, delivering cards and birthday pencils each and every morning to our students who are celebrating their special day. They also have assisted in the collection of PBIS tickets, which is our school acknowledgement for positive behavior. And we do a school-wide weekly drawing. And I'll be honest, our student council members are so excited to go to the classroom of our first, second graders, you know, and collect those tickets and be their biggest cheerleaders. Our fifth grade student council members also work to keep our hallways safe each and every day during morning arrival and they help our staff monitor the hallways and model that positive behavior for all of our students. Also in honor of Black History Month, members of our student council took great pride in preparing our hallways with flip posters of influential Black Americans. And it's so exciting to see our little kids going to the bathroom or going to the office. It takes them a couple of extra minutes, but they are teetering down the hall, peeking up to see who that person was with the poster. And I will tell you, that is a fan favorite and they participate in trivia each week. I'll be honest, I could go on and on about how awesome they are, but it's time for you to sit back and enjoy the show.
Student council, I think, is a way for our students to find a community within our school and even a larger community within our neighborhoods.
Last year, unfortunately, because of the pandemic, we weren't able to have it.
We've missed a whole year of being a community and working with people and talking to people. And so the kids are actually really excited this year versus other years to be involved in it.
We haven't filled out an application. They write us a paragraph about how they feel about building their community. What improvements do they want to make to their school?
And then we also want to make sure that they are good representations of students at Aronomic.
And I had to show that I was really good and I had to show that I can be respectful.
And their parents have to also sign off that they're responsible students and that they could come to the meetings.
My mom, it was like, she was like kind of nervous. She was like, are you sure you really want to do this? I was like, I'm very sure I want to do it.
We usually then get into the meetings. The first couple of weeks, we talked about why they're in student council and what it means to be responsible and what they should be doing to help the community.
Typically, we start by making birthday cards. Anytime it's someone's birthday, you get a little card and a pencil.
Student council decorates the inside of the card and student council members will deliver them to students.
It has a room number, the kid's name, and their grade. So I go to that room, then I go to the teacher, then he or she tells me where the kid is, then I'll bring it to them.
We make a lot of posters.
We've been hanging up posters. When you first come in here, you can see a lot of posters on the wall about Black History Month.
You can read about them and then it says, who am I? And you can flip that up and it tells you who they are.
Because right now our announcements are on the computer, we have the student council members record announcements sometimes.
It's kind of like tells people whose birthday it is, the date, a fun fact about today, or something that's been going on around the school.
We spend our time focusing on the other students and how we can support our school and continue to grow as a community.
Basically where we help people.
We do things to make Aronomic welcoming for students and things, then we'll outreach into the community to make our community better.
Some of them will be have done before with different projects, like the food drive is something that we've traditionally done.
We try to connect it so that the kids are involved and they see their impact. It's not just we're doing, you know what I mean? So when they're collecting the cans, they're counting the cans, they're sorting the cans.
When we did the sock collection, we set it up as a class competition.
We try to do everything that involves the entire school. As student council, we may not have representatives from first and second grade, but they can contribute to the larger projects or community drives that we do. So everyone feels like they're a part of this just larger community.
When we made it a community thing where it became like a whole school-wide thing, they were definitely motivated to want to help other people.
They're like, oh, my gosh, we raised this much money for CHOP or can you believe that we collected over 1,000 pairs of socks? Like they get a sense of that's a huge accomplishment because it is.
Any way we can get the kids more involved, that gives them a sense of ownership and I would love to see us be even more and more involved.
It's so important for them to start to build that foundation now, being able to build those qualities in their classroom, be able to show role model. Those are skills that they'll take into their careers, into their futures. It's been an honor to be able to work with student council this year. I mean, it's definitely been seeing the students grow and seeing how they've developed and seeing their leadership come out. That's a really important part of what student council does and I think that's really cool to say.
So on behalf of Aronomic Elementary School, I want to thank you guys for providing us the opportunity to brag about some of the things that make us a very special place. So thank you guys and have a great night.
Mr. Rehack, please keep up the great work. You're doing a great job. Thank you. The final item on the work session agenda is the Delaware County Council President, Dr. Monica Taylor, former school board director, with a resolution thanking the district for their COVID-19 response. Dr. Taylor.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me tonight. You know, our school districts have been so heavily impacted over the last two years by COVID-19 and you have continued to pivot and adjust and respond. And we just wanted to thank you for your collaboration and your help. You have gone above and beyond for not just the school district, but also our Upper Darby community at large, the administration, school board, and our teachers and families within the school district. So thank you. And with that, I'm going to read the resolution that we have from county council. Whereas the first COVID-19 case in the state of Pennsylvania was reported to be in Delaware County on March 6, 2020, forever changing the lives of the 500 County on March 6, 2020, forever changing the lives of the 576,830 residents of Delaware County. And whereas Delaware County, as well as the entire world, has suffered immense losses and challenges due to the COVID-19 pandemic for the past 19 months, including the loss of lives, serious illnesses, loss of jobs and income, closing of schools and businesses, isolation and depression. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, numerous organizations, institutions, and individuals answered the call to serve residents of Delaware County during a critical time, leading COVID-19 mitigation efforts for the county during a time when it was faced with navigating and surviving a deadly global pandemic without a county health department. And whereas numerous organizations, institutions, and individuals assisted in distributing thousands of PPE items, administering over 4,500 COVID-19 tests, administering over 175,000 COVID-19 vaccines, coordinating and distributing over $19 million in Delco Strong grants, and offering and sharing numerous resources to residents and business owners across the county. And whereas many individuals have gone above and beyond in their efforts to serve their community during the COVID-19 pandemic, and in their selfless dedication to serving their community in the midst of a pandemic demonstrates their commitment to their fellow neighbors. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the county council of Delaware County, hereby thank and commend the Upper Darby School District for its service and commitment to Delaware County residents in their time of need. Thank you all.
Dr. Taylor, I, it's humbling. I think there's a lot of people in the room, we saw kids, but I think the principals that are in the room tonight, the nurses, the assistant principals have carried the school district for a long period of time. And I really appreciate this recognition. I also want to say thank you to you. You've, you've definitely had to attend meetings with people like me over the last 19 months, and superintendents are not easy. And I appreciate your patience, and you're always a professional, calm presence. And it's, it's awesome to have you in our community. So thank you for recognizing the hard work that we've had to put in to keep these schools going. But the real work is in the principals, the assistant principals, the teachers, and the nurses in our schools. They've been outstanding. But thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participations procedures?
Yes, I drew the seat with the cafeteria wheels in the middle here. The, the board, as we just heard, obviously has gone through the, continues to navigate the pandemic, and we've moved to a virtual participation and an in-person participation. Tonight, those who are in person can participate and provide a comment, different than a committee meeting. Here at board meetings, it's comment only. But prior to the board taking action on any report, you can come to the microphone. When the board says, now time for the public comment, please provide your name, address, and the specific report you're commenting on. And you can, within three minutes, you can make a comment, and the board will take that into consideration before moving forward. Those who attend the meetings in person go prior to the virtual participation. During the pandemic, we've moved to a virtual learning, virtual environment for participation in our meetings. You can send in a comment to boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbysd.org. Again, provide your name, address, and the specific report you're commenting on, and we'll read that into the record before we take action. We also have a general comment period, that if you do write in your, to the email address, please be specific that was for general comment and should have been received prior to 7:30. You can also phone in at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Same process, provide your name, address, and the specific report you'd like to comment on, and we'll make that part of the record before we take any action. And I'm happy to provide an update as we move forward.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Please feel free to revisit that at your discretion this evening. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session on January 24th, 2024, from 5:00 PM until 6:10 for real estate and litigation matters, and this evening from 6:00 PM to 7:20 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hayek.
I am present.
Mr. Des Neuer.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Ms. Lamar Murphy.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. Are there any amendments to offer?
Yes, Board President, we have amended the personnel report. It's been made available to the board, is now made available to the public so that we can post positions in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Will anyone move to add the described item to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda with the approved amendment has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained, and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The minutes of the special meeting and the combined work session, regular meeting of January 11, 2022, are in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained, and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The reporter to secretary, please, Director Williams.
The reporter to secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained, and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The reporter to treasurer, please, Director Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. The reporter to treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed, and state your name for the record. Please silence your phones. Thank you. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained, and state your name for the record. The motion carries. We will now have the reporter to student representatives, Randy Lane and Majabin Tepeter.
Good evening, everyone. So today's building of reports would be Highland Park Elementary School, Upper Darby High School, and the kindergarten center for the Highland, for Highland Park. Our visit to Highland Park was very informative. The atmosphere of focus and fun hits you as soon as you walk into the front door. Colorful artwork lights up the halls, and the staff cares about making each day a great one for the students. In the mornings, students arrive at the school and pick up their breakfast on their way to homeroom. The principal, Mrs. DeVito, informed us of the many programs and activities going on at their school right now. They are putting on a production of Frozen Junior as their musical, and things have been running smoothly. The school also has a Big Brother, Big Sister program sponsored by Wawa. After a full tour of the school, we ended our visit by stopping at a fifth grade classroom and answering some students' questions. Some of them even showed interest in being a student representative one day. This visit was needed and showed us how the community within the school flows daily. For the Upper Darby High School, the Upper Darby High School recently started its new semester, allowing students to change schedules. The winter formal was this past Saturday and was a success. The high school is hosting Valentine's Day movie night, presenting Encanto. The high school has started to prepare for their production of the Percy Jackson musical as well.
Our visit to the kindergarten center was happy and cheerful. Principal Williams and the staff show incredible interest in the well-being of their students while juggling many other priorities at one time. We were able to view the morning operations through the students' eyes, with arrival being at 8:30 in the designated gym space of the building. They start the day with a song to prepare students for learning. The school provides masks for students who do not have the proper face covering upon arrival. After the 3B song in both pledges, the kindergarten center one and the national pledge, the students pick up their breakfast and head to their classrooms. The staff maximizes space and follows pandemic guidelines as best as they can. They care for the student, their care for our students is evident. This ends our report for this month. Thank you for allowing us to share our thoughts with you tonight.
Randy and Majabin, you both always do a great job, and we look forward every month to your report. So thank you for all your hard work. Thank you. The budgeted personnel and enrollment ports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the reporter to superintendent by Dr. Dan McGary.
I hope I get the same positive comments as my report from the board president. And this is, this is a long one tonight, so let's see how we do. Good evening, Board President Brown, members of the, the board administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the general community of the Upper Darby School District. Thank you to Bywood Elementary School, one of my favorite places, for leading us in the pledge and for sharing how team houses support your students. I'd also like to thank Aronimic Elementary School for sharing the wonderful accomplishments of your student council. Each month, different schools highlight just a few examples of the wonderful work taking place in our schools. And the success of our schools and the district certainly comes from great students, great teachers, but also special leaders. We are blessed to have the principals and assistant principals we have in this district. Principal Mayan and Principal Rehack, thank you for your leadership and for showing us again how blessed we are to have all of you. This evening, I will recognize some academic and athletic accomplishments of our students and staff, share in our celebration of Black History Month, provide a brief facilities update, review upcoming decisions with our health and safety plan, and close with the administrative recommendations going before the board this evening. As I stated previously, each month, we take the opportunity to remind everyone that the success of our students is the primary focus of our work. I was recently contacted by the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, who informed me that we have four recipients for the Excellence in Teaching Award led by the Franklin Mint Credit Union. These award-winning teachers are Alexander DiBiase, Upper Darby High School, Dottie Toomey, the kindergarten center, Cheryl Murray, Garaford Elementary School, and Dr. Tim Blessington from Beverly Hills Middle School. Congratulations. We're blessed that they enrich the lives of our students every single day. Unfortunately, I think three are announcing their retirement, moving through the school district. So it's a loss to the district. Last evening, I received an email from an Upper Darby High School gifted education teacher, Ms. Subec. Ms. Beck shared with me that our ethics team reached a milestone. According to Ms. Beck, quote, "For the first time in history, the Upper Darby Ethics Team advanced to the semifinal round in the Delaware Valley Regional High School Ethics Bowl this past Saturday." Upper Darby's Team One, self-named The Breakfast Club, some might be too young for that, but The Breakfast Club, delivered, delivered a unified performance, solidly beating, I will not name the schools, but in round, their round one opponent, their round two opponent, and their round three opponent. While the team ended up losing in the fourth round, they did finish in fourth place out of 16 teams. We also have a second team who goes by The Argumentals. The Argumentals also had a solid performance, finishing seventh overall. Congratulations to the Ethics Bowl team under the leadership of Upper Darby High School teachers, Ms. Subec and Mr. Chris Nielsen. Our students had, also had a very successful past month performing at the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association, known as PMEA, the District 12 Band and Festival at Springfield High School. Congratulations to Antonio Fiorentino Wong and Ms. Sebastian, Mr. Sebastian Mostick for their participation and success at this event. I was informed that Antonio will also perform in the Region Band Festival at West Chester Area School District's Ruston High School on Friday, March 11. Congratulations to both of those outstanding talented students. Our Distributive Education Clubs of America, also known as DECA, High School Club, continues to shine during a recent district competition. I would like to recognize the following winners listed below, who will be advancing to states later this month. Gray Shuster for first place, principal hospitality and tourism. Amar Kurakot, second place, personal finance. Mosif Kar Rahman, fourth place, entrepreneurship. Grace Colodi, fourth place, hotel and lodging management. Natalie Keller, third place, marketing communications. Iftkar Farhan, fourth place, retail merchandising. Tanvir Kaur, second place, sports and entertainment marketing. Faith Weaver, fourth place, sports and entertainment marketing. Lucas Collins and Rachel Fitzpatrick, buying and merchandising, team decision-making, first place. Congratulations. We all, we also have had several Upper Darby Delaware County Technical School Regional District competition winners. Our students competed in the Skills USA Career and Technical Student Organization, CTSO, competition. Skills USA is a career and technical student organization that serves, quote, "more than 395,000 high school, college, and middle school students and professional members enrolled in training programs in trade, technical, and skilled service occupations, including health occupations." The winners of the Regional District Competition from Upper Darby High School had the following winners. First place in the AM program, Nicholas Palmer, cybersecurity, Board President Brown. I would look into hiring him. First place in the afternoon, Nicholas Argito, team competition quiz bowl. Second place in the AM, Wendy Galvinane's dental assisting. Second place in the PM, Brandon Collin, t-shirt design. And third place in the AM, Nicholas Cucilino, internet working. Good luck to the students as they go on to compete in the state competition in Hershey from April 6 to the 8. Congratulations. We also continue our, our success with our sports programs at Upper Darby High School. Congratulations to Central Lake champion wrestlers in their weight class, Sam Kimmel, 132 pounds, and Julian LaVenture, 285 pounds. Congratulations, Sam and Julian. Julian's racked up a lot of awards this year, pretty, pretty talented kid. We have so much talent in our schools, and I want to say thank you again to the students for their hard work, our parents and families and our staff. It takes a total team effort to help all of these students reach their fullest potential. I also want to acknowledge February's Black History Month. Thanks to the principals, teachers, and students for their efforts in celebrating the many achievements and contributions of African-American and Black Americans. The Upper Darby School District will not shy away from addressing historical inequities, and we will continue to promote inclusive learning environments for the communities we serve. As a district, we see our school facilities as a contributing factor in the overall development of our students, and a key factor in addressing historical inequities that face communities similar to the Upper Darby School District. After several years of developing a facilities improvement plan, we are finally seeing those plans unfold. The Aronimic Elementary School Expansion and Renovation Project continues to move forward, along with the renovation of our current district facility located at 8201 North Lansdowne Avenue, now known as the 8201 Project. The 8201 Project will eventually be the new location for central office staff, transportation, technology, and maintenance. Both projects have experienced COVID-19-related delays with materials and shortage of workers, but we continue to remain optimistic that the Aronimic project will be complete in August of '23, and the 8201 Project will be completed by late summer or early fall of 2022. This evening, the Upper Darby Board of School Directors will also consider taking action on an agreement with Clifton Heights Borough. The agreement with Clifton Heights Borough will allow The agreement with Clifton Heights Borough will allow for the future development of a new middle school on the district-owned property in Clifton Heights. The potential new middle school would provide much-needed relief of overcrowding at both Beverly Hills Middle School and Drexel Hill Middle School. While we still have much to consider regarding a new middle school, the agreement that the Board of School Directors will consider this evening takes us one step closer to this new middle school becoming a reality. We will also continue to move forward with updates and improvements to all of our school facilities. Following the update on school facilities, I wanted to update the board and the public on our end-of-the-month discussion for our health and safety plan. We are continuing to review trends in local COVID-19 transmission rates and positivity rates. Thankfully, the data are trending in a positive direction. After review of updated masking guidance for medical professionals, we are considering a move away from requiring masking of all students and staff to recommending masking by March. We will provide an update and more information during our committee meetings later this month. Finally, I wanted to discuss some administrative changes here in the district. He's not here tonight, he had a planned vacation. But first, I would like to acknowledge the 19-year career of Mr. Frank Salerno. Mr. Salerno has recently earned a promotion and will be leaving the Upper Darby School District in March. He will be taking his talent to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, where he will be the new Director of Human Resources. Mr. Salerno has been a tremendous asset and leader in this district from the time he started his educational career as a teacher at Beverly Hills Middle School. He continued his leadership journey as a lead teacher at Drexel Hill Middle School, assistant principal at Drexel Hill Middle School, principal at Stonehurst Hills Elementary School, principal at Drexel Hill Middle School, and most recently as the Director of Elementary Education. We will certainly miss Mr. Salerno's leadership here in our district, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have worked with him over the years. I know that Mr. Salerno will continue to shine while working at the IU. With Mr. Salerno's departure, however, I am recommending several administrative moves to the board this evening. And here they are. Dr. Manfree will become the Director of Elementary Education. Ms. Kelly Simone is the Director of Secondary Education. Dr. Brian Yerson is the Director of People's Services. Ms. Kamisha Simpson is the Supervisor of Human Resources. Dr. Christopher Baglisi is the Principal of Walter M. Senko Elementary School, and Ms. Sue Campbell as the Principal of Hillcrest Elementary School. With the exception of Ms. Campbell as the Principal of Hillcrest Elementary School, all of the recommendations will go into effect July 1. I'm excited, and I mean excited, for all of these leaders, and I look forward to working with them in their new positions here in the district. Board, you look like you're gonna clap, you're gonna clap. Board, Board President Brown. You got me nervous. Board President Brown and members of the board, each month that passes, I feel more and more grateful to have the opportunity to serve as a superintendent of schools for this district. The job requires a total team effort, and I'm lucky to have such a talented team to work with every day. This concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. A lot of good information in there. Really appreciate all your hard work. Thank you. You should be proud. Yes, you did, you did, absolutely. We will now have an update on the Education and People's Services Committee meeting. Ms. Williams, you gonna read the summary? Director Williams.
I also forgot, Dr. Alloway is gonna be the high school principal, I went too quickly.
It's only our largest school. Thank you, thank you.
President Brown? President Brown?
Yes, yes.
At what point would it be appropriate for us to have a picture marking this historical moment after the personnel report is approved or at this time?
How about at this time?
Okay, all of our new appointees, please come on up.
All right.
All right. Back to you, Director Williams, the Education and People's Services Committee meeting summary.
Thank you. We had a high school scheduling update. It was informational only. Dr. Gregory Manfree, the Director of Secondary Education, and Mrs. Kelly Simone, our principal of the high school, presented an update on the high school schedule. The presentation included background information on the development of the schedule as well as some student achievement data, an update on the climate and culture of the building, and the impact the schedule has on transportation and food services. There was also a presentation that included staff feedback and student-focused group data. Again, this item was only informational, and there was no public comments.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have the summary for the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Director War Savage.
Thank you very much, President Brown. Here in the boardroom on Tuesday, January 25th, we did have a meeting for the Finance and Operations Committee. We covered three agenda items. The first one was a report on annual water testing, and that was informational. District Administration provided an update as it relates to the district's annual water testing analysis and results in the current reporting requirements established under Act 39 of 2018. The water testing was performed at all district facilities in December 2021. The second item on the agenda summary was request to name a school district facility update, and that required, that will end up requiring some board action. District Administration reviewed a revised request to rename the high school Performing Arts Center. Additionally, the potential cost associated with renaming the facility was reviewed. Administration asked the board to consider the requests and provide guidance on how they would like to proceed. Action item number three was policy, and that also will end up requiring board action as well. There were three policy items. Policy 610, purchases subject to bid. Policy 611, purchases budgeted, and 626, federal fiscal compliance. There was no public comment, but as mentioned earlier, all of these, all information in regards to the committee meetings can be found on board docs.
Thank you very much, Director Williams and Director War Savage for reading the summaries. Thank you. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Vice President Fields.
The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second?
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Personnel Report and amendments to the Personnel Report, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Personnel Report and the amendment to Personnel Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I just want to review, because there's a lot in here tonight, a lot of exciting things. First, I would like to congratulate our retirees. We wish you a safe and healthy retirement. For our administrative appointments, I do want to welcome Ms. Nina Tyer, who is returning to the district, as well as a congratulations to Dr. Matt Alloway, Ms. Susan Campbell, Dr. Greg Manfree, Dr. Chris Baglisi, Ms. Simone, Ms. Kamisha Simpson, Dr. Yerson. And even though Frank's not here tonight, I serve on the IU School Board and as appointed by this board, and I am going to make sure that he does a fantastic job on behalf of all the districts really in the county, because the IU helps every district in the county. So we're excited to have him there, but he will be missed here. I know we're leaving it in good hands with the appointments that Dr. McGary has recommended. Next, I'd like to congratulate the teachers who have met the requirements to move from temporary professional employee to permanent professional employee, that we appreciate your commitment to the school district. Tonight, we're also ratifying the contract with the Upper Darby Education Association. This is a really big deal. For those of you who do not know, we are ratifying a five-year contract with our teachers tonight to give them stability and to value the work that they're doing. Also, in this report, we have a memorandum of understanding between the district and the Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation related to the continuation of the Upper Darby summer stage in our facilities. So that is on this report. And then, of course, I already congratulated everyone on the amendment. So we're so thankful for all of our teachers, staff, and everything that you all are doing to continue to make this district great. So with that, I move for the adoption of the Personnel Report and its amendment.
Second?
Director Mitchell, thank you very much for that summary. That was excellent. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Comments?
Aye.
Little ahead of myself, any comments from the board? Director Neal?
Thank you. The MOU for the Foundation, Talentship, and District, is that a completed MOU?
Sure, I can answer that. There are some ancillary spaces that we're working out. For all intensive purposes, we feel fairly confident that we'll work out those spaces. Mrs. Simone, who will remain the principal until July 1, will work with us. We had a late Friday call with Kyle. Couple spaces that we're working out, obviously with the ARPESR funding, spaces are at a premium in the school district because of summer school and closing that learning loss that we have to put into place. So we'll work with the foundation to make sure that those spaces are okay. Other than that, the agreement is up to speed.
Okay, thank you. And the agreement itself, it's not posted on board docs for the public to read. Is there a reason for that, or is that because it's not approved yet by all parties, and then it's made public? When would the public have an opportunity to look at this agreement and provide any input?
Do you want to go first, or Kyle? Do you want me to go first?
The document can be made available once the board has approved it.
Thank you, the answer to the question.
Thank you, Dr. Neal. Any other comments from the board?
Thank you, Board President Brown. I just want to say congratulations to Frank Salerno. Our loss is definitely the IU's gain, and I can just share my most memorable moment with Frank was getting up to, that's not crazy, but getting up to, all you guys. But just having a phone call with him, getting up to speed on our elementary school projects and everything, all the, all the logistical information I had to go in with that, go, that was involved with that. And it was an hour-long conversation, but I felt at the end of the hour that I had every bit of information I needed to have. And Frank answered all my questions and took all the time, and I just really appreciated that. I think the people at the IU are very lucky. And I know we're very lucky with the movements that we've made here, but I think he'll be missed, but I'm happy for him.
Don, I just want to follow up to that. He's not here to defend himself, but Frank has a statement that he makes that we all know in administration. And that conversation goes like this, and it happened after your call. He'll walk into the office and go, frankly, couldn't have gone any better. Frank is not somebody who's lacking in confidence.
That's awesome. Thank you for sharing that. Director Fields, any other comments from the board? Okay, any comments from the public? Now, I can say, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The policy report, please, Director Des Noiers.
Thank you, President Brown. There is one policy up for a first reading this evening. It is Policy 101, Mission Statement, Vision, Shared Values. In order, there's no vote required this evening. In order for these changes to be adopted, this policy will have to go and undergo a second reading at a subsequent board meeting where it needs to be approved. And so the changes to Policy 101 are as follows. The district's new mission statement and vision are being incorporated into policy. The new mission statement and vision were developed with community input during the process of creating and adopting the 2021 to 2024 Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. After being posted and available for public comment for 28 days, the new Upper Darby Comprehensive Plan was adopted by the board at its August 10, 2021, board meeting. Moving on to the policies undergoing a second reading, the policy report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second?
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
President Brown, I have a comment.
Yes, please, Director Des Noiers.
So the three policies up for a second reading this evening are 610, purchases subject to bid or quotation, Policy 611, purchases budgeted, and Policy 626, federal fiscal compliance. And the changes to all three policies represent minimum dollar amounts being updated as driven by statute. That concludes my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Des Noiers. Any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Supplies Report, Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Brown. The Supplies Report has been made available to the board and the public.
Turn your mic off and turn it back on, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. It's okay. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
Mr. President Brown, I'm sorry. I'll make a comment.
Sure, sure, please.
In this Supplies Report, we're making an upgrade to the fitness equipment in the high school. And so the athletes in the high school will start seeing those improvements installed in the near future. So it's another form of improvement, you know, to our facilities, even though it's not improving the actual building, but it's maintaining the integrity of the equipment, making sure that our athletes have honestly world-class equipment and facilities to work in.
Thank you. Excellent for pointing that out. You're a coach, so of course, you would appreciate that. So thank you. And I'm sure Dr. McGary appreciates that being pointed out.
Yeah, I appreciate that I can convince the CFO. It hasn't been touched probably, you know, since I was in high school here. So it's going to be in really good shape. We're going to redo the whole athletic weight room area for the kids. It's going to be nice.
Yeah, many high schools, I mean, the equipment's from like the 80s. I mean, it's amazing the lifespan of some of the equipment that you've seen that, you know. So it's nice that we're getting an upgrade for our students.
Thank you. And thank you, Craig Rogers, our CFO. Board Secretary, he has eight titles. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none. Any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Next, the Transportation Report, Director Williams.
The Transportation Report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Director Neal.
Yeah, last name Neal. My comment is regarding the contractor Atlas. Are these employees union members? Are they part of the transportation union that we have here?
No, Director Neal. The reality is, earlier this year, we were struggling with transportation-related issues, and for the first time, we contracted out services. So previously, in the school year, the board approved the contract with Atlas to provide van services. They're not part of our union. We wanted to make sure in the school code that we also have all the drivers that are driving for Atlas, board-approved. When the contract was approved, that was an oversight. We're making sure that we have all of those out there for the board to approve.
So these are only van drivers, no school buses?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Facilities Report, Director Lamar Murphy.
The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each Board Member and have been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Director Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. Under consideration tonight, there is an approval for an agreement with Clifton Heights regarding the construction of Clifton Heights Middle School. This...
Different report.
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay. Any comments from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Sure. Do you want us to stop? I think that takes us to the Finance and Budget Report, Dr. Haig.
Thank you, President Brown. The Finance and Budget Report has been... is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the... Oh, sorry, Director Neal.
You forgot me already. No, I apologize for my placement issue earlier. So in regards to the agreement with Clifton Heights, there's some concerns that I just want to bring up to the board, to the administration, and to the public. Since this has not been approved, it was approved by Clifton Heights. And I guess the solicitor could answer this. Since it was approved by Clifton Heights, it's not approved by all parties, so it still can't be made public?
We're not going to make it public until after we've had a chance to vote on it, but my understanding is that if Clifton Heights has approved it, they very well may have made it public already.
Okay. So one of the stipulations in the agreement is a cap in student population. The cap in population for the middle school would be 800 students. This number is estimated to be at 760 students for the new middle school, which is 40 students below that threshold. That estimation was given by the administration of Upper Darby School District. Forty students is not a lot of wiggle room. When that threshold is met, there is no stipulations in this agreement on where those children would come from. So it could be understood, since Clifton Heights Borough, the council has approved this, that any number, any student rising above 800 should be bussed from Clifton Heights Borough to another middle school. Children of Upper Darby Township should not be impacted by the decisions and the vote by Clifton Heights Borough. I believe this agreement is creating or perpetuating a system of haves and have-nots. I believe in form, it's a form of soft segregation. We are creating a separate but equal facilities in which some buildings may continue to be overcrowded and some buildings have a hard cap. My hope in the future is that we have more reasonable elected officials in Clifton Heights Borough that would rescind this requirement to allow the district to maintain and position our school district in the best manner possible, because we have the children's... The children's education is foremost our number-one priority. And so we would never want to impact that in a negative way. So I do have concerns regarding the constrictions that are being placed upon the district by the borough. Other restrictions include there's no language regarding crossing guards that would be located in Clifton Heights Borough. Currently, Upper Darby Township provides money to Upper Darby School District for crossing guards, or will in the future after an agreement. That agreement has not been discussed with Clifton Heights, so now we're treating two different municipalities. And there is one other issue.
While you're thinking of that...
Yeah. If you wanted to respond, I know...
Dr. McGary, you want to respond to the crossing guard piece?
Yeah, so I apologize. We're dealing with a student emergency situation in the community right now. But I heard part of this conversation. I know we've had some conversations in the past, but I think I understand. So the original part, if I can say this back to you, tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
There's a concern in the agreement that there is a cap in enrollment. And I just want to walk quickly everybody through the fact that when we started this process in the district, we were trying to create appropriate boundaries where we would capture three middle schools and three elementary schools, feeding those middle schools as walkable as possible, most related to the communities that they would serve. So we'll start with the Beverly Hills community. And when it's all said and done, you know, we have this all worked out, the goal will be to have a new elementary school on the Carrington Field, Stonehurst Hills, and Bywood Elementary School feeding Beverly Hills Middle School. Because of the community and the capacity of that neighborhood, that school will relatively be a little bit larger naturally because of the number of residents that live there. There's not much else we can do with that other than busing kids all the way across town, which we're doing currently, and that is not working in the best benefit to the community that we're serving, because busing students all the way out to Senko has not served that community well, as we've heard, that they want those students back into the community. Which means by bringing the elementary school students back, they have an elementary school that's closer to the community, more engagement, and then there's a middle school with more engagement. As we kind of reverse clock out of that area, Highland Park Elementary School, Hillcrest Elementary School, and essentially Highland Park will take back some Charles Kelly students, because we would eventually close Charles Kelly, freeing us up from two leases. We leased two buildings, as we know, Senko Elementary School and Charles Kelly. We don't own those. One of them is, you know, 20 minutes one way out of the community. Charles Kelly comes back into its neighborhood. Those students again begin to attend either Stonehurst Hills Elementary School or Highland Park Elementary School. Highland Park Elementary School students then eventually end up going to Drexel Hill Middle School. I can tell you, having done registration for a number of years, many Highland Park parents would argue that they are closer to Drexel Hill Middle Schools in some respects than they are Beverly Hills Middle School, again, getting closer to some reduction in transportation and more walkable to school. Hillcrest remains going to Drexel Hill Middle School. Aronomic remains going to Drexel Hill Middle School. And we're increasing the capacity of Aronomic to help alleviate Highland Park's capacity to Hillcrest, Hillcrest's capacity to Aronomic Elementary School. That will then bring Drexel Hill Middle School down from 1,300 to 1,400 students to just around 1,000 or a little bit more, and will allow us to reach our original goals in our facilities plan, which is to remove modular trailers from our campuses. And we have to keep that in mind as we're working toward this process. Right now, I would argue that you currently have de facto segregation, I think is one of your comments that you made, by having the schools separated the way that they are and having overcrowded school at Beverly Hills Middle School with no relief in sight at all. To your point, is this the perfect absolute dream scenario? The dream scenario would be have none of our schools overcrowded, plenty of open space on our campuses, and wonderful walkable schools. But in a community that's roughly eight and a half, nine square miles, as densely populated as this is, it's just not a reality for us, given the space. Which brings me to Clifton Heights Middle School. We were kicking around the idea of taking Drexel Hill Middle School, renovating it, and expanding it, and turning it into a 2,000-student campus. Can you imagine the traffic if we were to do that? Thanks to Joe McGilvery and Dr. Manfree, we realized that Clifton Heights is something that we own, and it would provide us significant relief. The capacity of the building, per the specs, is close to 950 students. But when it's fleshed out appropriately, and that's the size of that building, given the catchment area that we're talking about, which will become Garford Elementary School, Westbrook Park, and Primus, that enrollment fits nicely in that neighborhood. And it provides us much-needed relief. We're going to be able to reduce almost 400 students out of Beverly Hills Middle School and probably close to 400, if not around 350, from Drexel Hill Middle School, which brings all those middle schools down to much more reasonable, manageable populations. Your point is understood. It's a valuable point. Obviously, we would like to have more space and more freedom, but we're not a school district who's in the luxury, as you know, Dave, to be able to take these spaces and just create, you know, STEM spaces or luxurious spaces. We're literally just trying to relieve overcrowding and get back normal music classroom spaces, normal art classroom spaces for our students, and also no longer have students attending classes in modular trailers that were 25 years old 20 years ago when we leased them. So it's definitely a work in progress. My comment back would be, this is a huge win for the district to be able to pull this off, to move in this direction. I understand your comments about it being some concerns as far as the cap, but I still think that over the enrollment trends that we've looked at, we're still going to be in a much better place pulling this off than what we're currently existing right now. If Dr. Manfree comes in my office one more time and says to me, what are we going to do about the overcrowding at both middle schools and not having a solution, it's a very difficult conversation to have with somebody. So I think it's a wise move for us to move in this direction. Your point is well made, that it's obviously not the perfect solution, but it's pretty close, given the circumstances of what we've had operating here for such a long time.
Yeah. Well, after July 1, he won't be coming into your office regarding middle schools. It will be elementary. Yeah, he'll still be bothering you. Could you speak to... I remember what my third topic was, but could you first speak to the crossing guard situation?
Yeah. At this point in time, we have not finalized all of the aspects. Board Member Neal is referring to that. In most municipalities, the burrows or the townships take responsibility for the crossing guards. There's a part of this conversation that you've opened up that I didn't, so hopefully it doesn't come back to haunt me in this conversation. But the township conversation, whereas the township took transfer tax from the school district, that currently has not been a conversation in other areas. So I think that balancing of that information is important to consider when we're talking about ownership of the crossing guards. We'll continue to, as you pointed out, handle the crossing guards for all townships and burrows. The relationship with Upper Darby Township is a little bit different, given the transfer tax conversation that we've occurred.
And similar to the crossing guards, I know the... This is actually separate from my third piece. Police officers, the borough was concerned about an increased number of police officers that they would have to hire. Was that issue alleviated? Because I don't believe I read anything in the agreement that stated any sort of, you know, increase in security at the middle school or whatnot.
No, we... Chief Rockenbach has been an awesome asset. You know, obviously, we all have bosses that we have to sometimes deal with. I'm sure my administrators would say the same thing. But Chief Rockenbach has been great to deal with on a one-on-one basis and with our team. We've had conversations about how we have our own security team here. Mr. Manley is behind you, obviously. And we would continue to have our school resources in place and communicate under an MOU with the police. Through these conversations and this agreement, it's been understood that there are shared responsibilities when you have students in your community. Right now, Clifton Heights students come to Upper Darby and they go back to their community, so whatever presence is still there, it's still the current police force's responsibility to address those students. And we walked through those conversations. It was understood. It's also understood that whether there are grant opportunities, school safety grants, we've talked about, we would certainly partner with Clifton Heights, as we have recently with Upper Darby Township under Chief Bernhardt. So, well, we've written grants together. We've provided opportunities for students and as well as training for police.
Okay, thank you. And the last point of consideration I wanted to bring up to the Board Administration and public is the use of facilities. So currently, in the agreement, it's stipulated that the municipality, citizens and organizations partnered with the municipality can use the facilities free of the fee, but still be charged, like you use its fee. Basically, if a custodial is needed, they would have to pay that rate. And I believe administration responded that it is similar in cost to what we currently have as policy. So if it's that similar in cost, why is that not across the board in regards to citizens of Upper Darby Township, citizens of Milborn, both municipalities, Borough of Milborn, the Upper Darby Township, and any partnerships either of those municipalities have?
Yeah. Again, a very long, complicated answer. I'll try to truncate it as best I can. Historically, as we all know, Clifton Heights in 1970-71 felt like they lost their heartbeat or their community in a handshake deal. No one here... I wasn't born at that time, but that's the concern, that it was at one time their open space for their athletic programs. Early on in the process, in order to dig a hole essentially and dump water in it to get an infiltration test, we had to break the lease, because the borough at that time, under different leadership, threatened to have us arrested for simply completing the task that they'd asked us to complete for this facility's plan, this project. That then caused an alarm inadvertently with the youth programs in Clifton Heights, who were concerned, thinking they're going to break the lease and take away our fields, and we can no longer play on these fields. Again, that was not something that we here, this administration, the board, supported. So we wanted to further show them that they'll be getting back fields and an athletic facility that would benefit their community. For since 1971, they feel that they've been charged. They have not been given the same access since... They feel that they've been charged. They have not been, been given the same access since 1971 as other communities, local community athletic programs have and meeting with them to facilities. And we feel in order to get this project to where we need to get it to, to provide relief, that that's an understandable agreement that we could have where we would provide that relief to those youth organizations and get them back going in the right direction. Now, the comment that you're bringing up as well as, as far as Milborn and Upper Darby Township, we're more than happy and willing to have conversations with programs that are similar to Clifton Heights in the borough where they are those community strong and held relationships that are there on that property, on that field, where for a long period of time, they, they felt that it was theirs, different than outside organizations coming in. We're more than happy to have similar conversations with similar youth programs, to your other comment. This agreement is strictly really based on Clifton Pal and the Boys Club and working with them, not just anybody who walks into that area, getting access to those fields and having access to other maintenance or facilities for the same agreement. It's really strictly to Clifton Pal and Boys Club, and that's an understood conversation that we've had. We will be more than happy to have conversations with other similar type of historical youth programs here in, in the community, and the administration will.
So I'm trying to find the, the part of the use of facilities. It, it does mention those citizens. So individual citizens could request the use of the inside facility of Clifton Heights free of fee, but not an Upper Darby resident.
Yeah, and, and Kyle can correct me if I'm wrong, but that, a citizen is the legal language representing a youth coach who's a citizen that can get access to that. That's a coach. And this board has asked us in our policy to make sure that there may be outside community members who coach, I for one, coach at Lannar Kills, who might want to use a space because they volunteer and give their time for these local organizations, that our understanding was the board was okay with allowing that kind of access and use of facilities for citizens that are bringing those programs into our schools for our kids. I, I could be wrong, but that was my understanding.
Mr. Berman, could you expand upon that? If a resident comes in and is requesting the facilities and we're charging a regular rate, could they come back and, and say, well, not according to this agreement, I, I should not be paying a rate?
The agreement does speak to that the district will not charge the borough, its residents or civic organizations a fee for the use of the indoor athletic or recreational facilities, except for any fee for costs actually incurred by the district for the borough's use.
So your interpretation of that is residents would not be eligible for the reduction of fee, or they would be?
As written, it appears that the residents would be eligible for a reduced cost of use.
Okay, so I mean, this is an issue where we're creating a system that haves and have nots, where, you know, in, in Upper Darby Township, we've seen it many times where the 19026 was pitted against 19082, and it seems now we're dragging another zip code into this fight, this equity fight, where we're treating different residents differently. And our most needed residents that need the most are not eligible to receive this type of assistance. So I would ask the board to take a look at this policy and amend it to include the waiving of fees for all residents, the municipalities and any organizations with those municipalities. That way, we're treating players all equally, as we all, I know we believe. Can't treat one person different, got to treat them all the same. I do have my reservations, as I've stated. I believe this school is a good idea, is much needed. I will be voting to approve this agreement, but I have serious reservations regarding the language that has been implemented in this agreement. President Brown?
Thank you, Dr. Neal. Are there any other comments from the board?
Just a very brief comment. I just want to thank everyone who made this agreement happen. As, as we all remember, four years ago, we started down this path for the Clifton Heights Middle School after really a lengthy, and I know Mr. Brown was part of the education specifications committee, where we really determined that, you know, where our overcrowding was and what was the neediest thing, and it, and it was a middle school. And four years ago, we started down a path, and unfortunately, we, we did encounter a lot of resistance. And it has taken mountains to move and, and lots of sleepless nights and, and in my opinion, prayer to get this on the table tonight for approval. So I urge the board to pass this tonight.
Director Fields, thank you.
Board President Brown. I also, my sentiments are also the same. Thank you, everybody who's worked on this over the past four years. To your first, Board Director Neal, to your first point about the cap, the, the council in Clifton Heights Borough is responsive to its citizens. I am sure if there is a resident in Clifton Heights Borough who finds their child has to go on a bus to go to a different middle school because of a cap at the new middle school, they can address that with the Borough Council in Clifton Heights. And most, most elected officials do their best to be responsive to their residents, and the borough will be responsive in this case. I'm ready to have a vote because I'm not going to let the perfect get in the way of the good here. Let's get to it.
All right, I'll just add my own two cents, you know, regarding the cap. I trust this gentleman to my left. I know how hard he's worked to get us here. And I've watched him make miracles out of very bad situations on behalf of our kids, so I do trust him. If he says we're going to be okay with the cap and he can manage that and make the adjustments that's needed to keep our kids in the best possible education environment, I believe that. He wouldn't be sitting next to me if I didn't believe that. And the MOU, your, your point is well taken. I understand your point. I live in the 19082, so I, certainly I have to pay attention to what you were saying, and that resonated with me, but I do think this is a good MOU. I do agree with Director Mitchell about how much effort, blood, sweat and tears it took us to get here, so I think we should pass it. But your point is well taken, and if we have to revisit that or rethink it or, or approach the, the borough to talk about that, then that makes sense, but I do not think we should derail where we are right now. Thank you.
Board President Brown, I just also want to comment. We've also provided the other improvements, opportunities down the line to alleviate overcrowding should, should those things happen. And also, we'll be bringing forward the conversation of an updated education specifications process, and we're providing some enrollment information. First, we'll provide some enrollment information and discussion about what this will look like in February. And then we will also be asking the board to get an updated education specifications because it's been some time. That will also provide some clarity with where we're going and what it looks like.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Any other comments from the board?
Since no one else, I'll go one more time. So the, the reason why I'm voting for this tonight is to move forward. The issues that I brought up are issues that we can discuss and deliberate in the future. There would be, those issues really should not be a reason to hold this up. And so that's why I am voting for it, but I, I would appreciate the board to consider looking at our policies and make sure that we treat everyone in our community that, that we serve equally.
Thank you, Director Neal. Other than Dr. Neal, any other comments from the board? I'm just kidding. No, that's fine. All right, any comments from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Okay, I think that takes us to our collateral signing reports, and we'll start with the Delaware County Community College, Vice President Fields.
Thank you, Board President Brown. There is no meeting until March, but I was emailed information for the community college. There is a vacancy on the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees. So tell your friends if you're interested in serving on the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees. You can put in an application. There's a position description that I'll ask Ms. Buford to post, that'll have more information. Just some additional notes. 1,397 former Upper Darby students attend the community college. That's the highest of any school district. We have 39 that are dual enrolled. That's not the most. It's the second highest of all the Delaware County public schools, really actually has 59. The college also was awarded 2.5 million, a $2.5 million grant from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program. This grant is going to go right into remodeling the former Archbishop Pendergrass High School building for the opening of the campus there. And I think at that point, we'll probably see a lot of more students dual enrolled from here to the community college, and that'll be great overall. So we're looking forward to all those things, and that's my report.
Thank you very much, Vice President Fields. Next, we'll go to the DCIU, Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The DCIU Board of School Directors met last Wednesday. I'm really not, it's, we're pretty much did the same thing like a normal school board does, but we did approve Dr., Mr. Frank Salerno as the Director of Human Services. But I did want to just remind everyone that I left this on your desk at the last committee meeting. It is the, the guide for technical education, and we have over 250 students attending the technical school, you know, at this time, and I'm sure this is a selection time, so anyone who's watching from home, make sure your children, it is available online on the Delaware County Technical School website. But, you know, in the same vein as what Mr. Fields was saying, you know, we have some students going for dual enrollment, and we have a lot of students going to the technical school. And I would encourage your students at home also to look at the dual enrollment option. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Next is the Legislative Council, and that meeting is actually tomorrow morning, but I'm going to cover a little bit of what they're going to talk about in the PSBA update that I'll give a little bit later on, so I'll come back to that. Mendon Hall Tyson, Dr. Hague?
Thank you, President Brown. So the Mendon Hall Tyson Scholarship has been a group of four scholarships of $7,000 a year, and we met just last week. And I'm happy to report that the financials for the, for the scholarship are, are doing well and that we're able to increase the four scholarships to $8,000 this year, which is great for our students, yeah. I'm sort of applauding, applauding the stock market, but, no, and, and, and good, and very good finance, and very good financial management by, by the scholarship committee. But the, the, so the allocation of, the, the awarding of the scholarships hasn't been determined yet, but that's, that's what comes up in the next couple of months, and that, and that'll be fun. I know we have some, some pretty incredible applicants.
Yes, it's always tough to do that every year, I'm sure. Thank you very much for that update. Home and School Director, Weir Savage, has there been any, anything on that front?
Well, in anticipation of Dan McGary getting ready for his world tour with guest stars from the administration, going to each home and school in the coming weeks and months and just reintroducing what it is the board is doing for you, and thanks to the generosity of the community. But all that aside, I just want to make sure everyone is aware where to find home and school information on the district website. So at your leisure, if you go to upperdarbysd.org, and if you look at the top menu, it's in purple, there's going to be a selection in that menu that says, let me see here, about SD. It's the second menu selection. And in that sub-menu, if you go across, there is a selection called District Profile. And in that district profile, off to the left-hand side margin, it's kind of a little gray, you can click on Our Schools. And if you click on Our Schools, it actually lists all the schools that we have, the roster of schools and each individual school's website. And you can click on each individual school's website, and on their own menu screens, again, at the top, purple banner, there's a Home and School section for each and every one. I encourage you all to get very familiar with that. It has all the necessary information. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you very much for that report. Next is PSBA. Director Williams, did you have something you wanted to mention for? Okay, please zoom. Turn it off and turn it back.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
The next All School Directors Monthly Exchange for PSBA is February 15th, and that's held in the afternoon from 12:30 to 1:30 on Zoom for anyone that's interested in attending. And then February 9th, which is tomorrow, there's a webinar at noon for the impact on the governor's budget.
Thank you. And PSBA sent a legislative report, and they, they let you know that Congress is working on appropriations right now, and I'll just read a part, just one section of the report. Educational advocates are optimistic that eventually there will be an agreement on fiscal year 2022 funding, and Congress will enact large increases for education, although not as large as the increases requested by President Biden in his fiscal year 2022 budget requests. Groups such as the Committee for Education Funding continue to press appropriations for full-year fiscal year 2022 funding with large investments in education and sent a letter to Congress last week conveying that request. So that's ongoing. Both the House and Senate are working on appropriations, and, you know, we're hopeful and optimistic on their investment in education. And I want to point out another date is April 25th is the Capitol, is at the Capitol for Spring Advocacy Day. And that's where PSBA and PSA, PA, SA will be at the State Capitol in Harrisburg for Advocacy Day. It's a complimentary event sponsored by PSBA and the Pennsylvania Association for School Administration. And that's where they bring school directors and superintendents together to advocate for education. So I'm sure Dr. McGary will be a part of that, as, as will I, so. That's all I have for PSBA. Anyone else? Vice President Fields?
Thank you. They have monthly meetings with, for our board leadership, and I was on, the, the call was today from 12:30 to 1:30. And they just go over, you know, how to, you know, strategies for working as a board and things like that. Today's topic was dealing with contrarian or lone wolf board members. And it was really good.
That's not nice. That's not nice.
I'm not kidding. I'm not kidding.
No, I'm talking about what you did.
But it was a good discussion, and they're, they're, but I, I came away with it, the, understanding that there, there can be healthy disagreement, as long as it's a healthy disagreement that, that creates conversation and, and is, works towards a resolution in a positive way. And I think that's what we do here, so just wanted to report that.
Thank you for pointing that out. Now, give me your hand. No, I actually wasn't able to attend the board leadership series today. I had a work conflict, but they asked me to be a guest speaker at the one in March, so I definitely will attend that one. Next, I think we, Policy Liaison, Director Des Newers or Director Neal, anything for policy?
This is Director Des Newers. I don't have anything. I don't know if Director Neal does.
Just beyond my, you know, earlier comments tonight, no, I do not.
Okay, Communications, Dr. Hague or Director Mitchell, you guys have been doing a great job with the reports. They've been very comprehensive, so anything to add?
I'll just add that, of course, as we say each month, community members, whether they're parents or, or not, can sign up for the monthly updates by going to the website, upperdarbysd.org, and going to the School Board tab, and then School Board Monthly Updates. Also, the, there's a full catalog there of, of the past monthly updates, so if anyone missed something from previous months, they're, they're there now. And thank you to Ms. Buford for making that available.
So I just want to emphasize to the public that that's above and beyond, you know, we're all volunteer, we're school board directors, but that's a comprehensive newsletter that two of our school board directors put together, and it's excellent. It has a lot of great content, and it's from our perspective. It's not from the district's perspective. It's a lot of great information about the district concerning the district, but it's from our perspective. So I highly encourage you to subscribe and, and look at that. I think that takes care of our collateral reports. That takes us to old business.
I have some old business.
Yes.
President Brown.
Sure.
In the same vein as Director Neal's comment earlier about the policy, several months ago, I sat before this board, and I believe the board agreed to revise Policy 707, Use of School Facilities, to include not only athletic groups to use our properties and facilities for a reduced cost, but other, other student groups. And I would like to see that and what Mr. Neal said, looked at more closely. And I'm not quite sure why it hasn't got on the agenda for the policy review, but Mr. Neal, you are on as the policy liaison, and I hope that, you know, the will of the board that night, in my remembrance, was to look at Policy 707, the Use of School Facilities, and, and opening the access to groups other than athletic groups. So, I would urge you to, to look at that with Mr. Des Newers, and to not, you know, put it on the front burner instead of the back. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mitchell. There was a policy meeting this week that I was unable to attend, but the next policy meeting, I intend to bring that policy up so that the committee can look at it closer, and then bring possible options to the board that we do. As you do know, though, we recently, and another board member administrator can, can reaffirm this, we did approve a new cost schedule for the use of facilities. And my concern with that is, is the addition of the Clifton Heights Agreement that supersedes what we voted on. But we, so we should look at the use of facilities again, based, you know, using the lens of this new agreement, and how we're treating the different communities in a different light.
Exactly. And the, the, that night, that was the night that we talked about looking at the facilities' fees to include Girl Scout groups and Boy Scout groups and every, you know, groups that serve children. And I, I think that's something that should be a priority of this board.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Is there any other old business? Yes.
Yes.
Dr. McGary?
I believe the last, during the last meeting, we had, Craig Rogers and I were asked to provide more information on the naming of the facilities with respect to naming the Performing Arts Center or honoring two individuals who contributed a lot to the school district, both Harry Dietzler and Bar Benglian. We've since received a third recommendation or application for naming the facility solely after Bar Benglian. Craig Rogers and I have gone back and asked, obviously, both two out of the three involved about what the board asked us to discuss last time regarding either names above each independently or collaboratively, the Benglian, Dietzler, or Dietzler or Benglian, or simply plaques. We did receive an update communication from one of the individuals today, who certainly was respectful of trusting the board, from what I read and understood in the district, to go and honor via plaques. And then also consider, there, there was a conversation about doing some more celebration of Ms. Benglian and Mr. Dietzler in different ways. One was a mural, I think, in one area with the Art Department being involved. I can't think of the full email right now, but there were other aspects of that email. But there was seemingly an understanding of honoring with, with plaques both, both individuals. And we feel administratively that the plaques in the Performing Arts Center honoring both Bar Benglian and Harry Dietzler would, would be best. Craig, is there anything I'm missing? I'm sorry.
As far as the naming of the facility, the one requester Dr. McGary is referring to was still strong in her opinion of the Performing Arts Center being named after Mr. Dietzler as she requested in her form, and that the board could then consider renaming the Music Wing after Ms. Benglian. I think that brings Dan and the administration, myself, to the recommendation of the, the alternative there of, you know, we have three competing recommendations or requests for one facility. We think it would be a better way to honor both individuals by simply putting up memorable plaques in, in their names.
Mr. Rogers, I think in that correspondence that you're referring to, they did also support, and, and as Dr. McGary mentioned, that they entrust us with honoring both of them appropriately, like the plaques. I think they alluded to that they, that would be acceptable as well, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. So, I guess my next question is, how, how do we proceed? Is it something we vote on since, do we, how do we move forward with this action to see if we agree with, if the board, the consensus is that we agree with the plaques, based on the recommendation of the administration?
Because this is a matter that you have already on the agenda, it's not like you have to add it to the agenda at this point. So, I would, I would say that somebody needs to make a motion for what you want to accomplish, and if it has a second, it will then be considered by the board and potentially voted on.
I, I motion to-
Before we make a motion, hang on, before we make a motion, I want to see if the board has any comments. I want to make, just give them the opportunity to make a statement, I think. Director Mitchell?
I have a question, President Brown. So, are you proposing that we do not honor any of the three requesters with naming of a school facility and forego that to only have plaques?
I think that's, yes, I think that's the recommendation of administration, because that keeps within the spirit of honoring both people and not renaming any of the facilities, but honoring them both with plaques outside the Performing Arts Center, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. I'd like to make a motion to honor both of the individuals with plaques.
Second. Okay, can we, can we do a, or just do a consensus vote or a poll vote, which?
There's a motion in a second. At this point, you'd have discussion, and then maybe you should have some discussion after that. Maybe you should have, get some consensus from that discussion.
Okay.
All right. I'll say, I made my motion because, based on the one-requester's response, they were, they seemed perfectly happy with the plaques. And so, I'm trying to honor her request with, with, for the plaques.
I think the other requesters are on our board, so they can talk to, if they think that that's acceptable.
Yeah, at the last committee meeting when we discussed this, I was asked after if, if I would be willing to alter my request, which I did, obviously, because we want to honor both, both individuals. My concern here is that I haven't seen the other请求's email. I don't really know if that's in the spirit of her request, because my understanding was that that请求 would not change.
Well, I just asked a question, and I think in her email, she alluded to that would be an acceptable thing to her. I'm sure we can share it with you, but, you know, that, that's the understanding of the email, if I'm not mistaken.
So, we basically, we wouldn't be honoring any of the three requests to name the facility. I just want to make sure I understand that. So, we took the request, but we're not, we're, tonight, we're just not going to do it. We're going to just do the plaques.
That was my-
Okay.
Dr. Hague?
I guess, I, I sort of feel like I've heard, I've heard a little bit of both, and so now I'm a little bit confused as to whether the请求 liked the idea of plaques also, but really wanted the naming of the facility. It's, it's, it just seems like we don't, I don't have a very clear picture.
You want to summarize the email? Mr. Rogers?
Craig, I can help.
Okay.
That's okay. So, I understand the questions and, and the concerns that are coming up. I think the problem is where it's somewhat of an impasse, and my understanding is the board has the authority to do what they want in this situation, and it wouldn't be kind of a violation of the policy or the process. We are, we've spent a considerable amount of time, and we're letting time go by honoring, honoring people respectfully. There's been a clear conversation to get to this point where we now have a third who only wants to honor one individual and not both individuals. And so, we have a complicated process where, let's honor both individuals respectfully, and then work on some of the other details that were in there. But, we're going to spend a lot of time trying to come to consensus on putting both names and not honor them at all, so the administration feels like, at least having, you know, plaques in that lobby area honoring both who have served us meets somewhere in the middle of respecting what they've contributed to the school district versus somewhat of this back and forth over naming this and then naming that, and we don't make much progress.
Vice President Fields?
So, fellow board members, the administration has made a recommendation. Okay, so, just going to let that sit there. Also, Policy Committee, this particular policy is one I, I would like for us to revisit. So, if you could put that on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah. Currently, Policy 701.1, the, the naming of school district facilities, only asks the board, "Consider the request." Does not actually have, like, we don't actually have to have a vote on it, it's just that we have to consider it. Two people have to continue moving that process forward, so that way, we have more information to make that decision. In the end, like Dr. McGary stated earlier, it is up to the board how they wish to proceed. And I believe what I'm hearing from some board members is that they are taking consideration of the requests and choosing to honor those requests by establishing plaques outside of the Performing Arts Center honoring both individuals separately by having their own individual plaque.
And one of the reasons, I, I thought we should go back to that policy, because I thought it was, I thought there was some vagueness to it that caused some confusion, at least that gave me concerns. That's one of the other reasons I'd like to visit it again.
Was there a particular part of the confusion, or?
The two, the two members, I said, two members of the committee.
No, two members of the board.
Of the board, right.
Yeah, so the committee is actually just Neil Des Newers and myself, and then some administrators.
Well, no, for the, right, okay.
Yeah, so it would be two members of the board. That way, even though they constitute a minority of the board, they can still continue the process that allow the board to, really allow the administration to retrieve data and information to share back with the board.
Yes, that part.
Are there any other comments from the board?
Just one, I just want to say that both of these individuals served the students of Upper Darby for decades, and I just hope that this does actually honor their legacies.
Okay. So, hearing no, seeing no other comments, I think we had a motion and a seconded, so go, Doc, Mr. Rogers.
Just to be clear, when we're looking at the policy, and we stated at the last committee meeting, we didn't come to a consensus of what we were moving forward at the last committee meeting, and it was brought up that we'd bring it to the board meeting tonight under old business, so the board can make a decision which option we would move forward. The policy still requires us to advertise for 14 days that the board would vote on one option. I think Don's point of looking at the policy, and Mr. Berman had referenced it last meeting, the policy wasn't designed for competing interest on the same, renaming the same facility at the same time, and I think that create, was part of the confusion. But at this point in time, we need the board to decide one of the options to move forward. If it would require a board vote at that point of actually renaming the facility, we would have to advertise. If it's simply that you're going to take the administration's recommendation of using the plaque, there's no, if the board gives consensus to move forward with that, that's really not, that's not part of the policy. You're actually choosing not to move forward with renaming the facility for Policy 701.1.
Right.
So, all that being said, if you were to choose renaming the facility, it would be advising the administration to advertise that for at least 14 days for a vote at the next board meeting.
Right, but that gives us time to look at the policy. I'm sorry, go ahead.
All I was saying was that is not the motion that's before the board at this time.
Right, the motion is for the plaques, but I mean, that gives us time to look at the policy and fine tune it and, and put language in there if we have competing recommendations in the future. So, this is strictly about the plaques, so I think we have a motion.
Well, so, I believe Director Fields would have to withdraw his motion, and then make a motion for advertisement for the plaques, right?
No, 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 no. The plaque, we would only have to do that if we was going to rename the facility. We're not, we're not doing a policy method.
Okay, all right.
So, all those in favor, we had a motion, it was seconded, all those in favor of the plaque options that the administration is recommending, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye opposed, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please say aye abstained, and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Any other old business? That moves us to new business. Is there any new business from board members? Hearing none, that takes us to the, we are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with Policy 903, the time allotted for general comments, both in-person and submitted comments will not exceed one hour. So, we'll start with the in-person list, and then I'll hand it over to Ms. Buford for any comments that we've received online. Alana Shabon Shabani, and I apologize if I mispronounced that. Alona Shabani, I believe.
The second one was better.
Okay.
Okay. Alona Shabani, 290 Child's Avenue, Drexel Hill, PA. Just a quick background, my son has a medical exemption, a valid doctor's note from CHOP to exclude him from wearing a mask. As of today, he's still not allowed to wear a mask. Upper Darby School District will not allow an exemption. I have been personally fighting this battle for a long time, and I'm tired of it. So, everybody heard that. Okay. It started with two weeks only to slow the spread. Now, it's been about two years. Everyone on the planet knows masks do not work. This is not about masks or science. This is about control and power. The COVID transmission rates that you're giving us are unrealistic. Viruses will always win because they recycle, they keep spreading, and they mutate. People can get the same virus multiple times. We will never be under the threshold that you're expecting. These unrealistic numbers are giving you the fuel that keeps you going to continue mandating masks. We understand you have to be in charge and keep doing regardless of what the PA Supreme Court ruled about the masks. You can still be in charge and have the power you crave by making masks optional. You will not lose any funding. You will not be punished by Department of Health, Department of Education, or Governor Wolf. By making masks optional, you are giving the people a choice, and you will gain 10 times, probably more, 100 times more support by doing so. You are giving my son, who has, like I said, a valid medical exemption, a choice. My son used to love school. He never missed a day. He hates school now. We will 100% support you when you make masks optional. The PA Supreme Court ruled it out, no more masks. I know it's up to you guys, but please stop the nonsense. Masks do not work. Let our kids breathe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Erica Tuttle.
Hello. Good evening. My question-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you please-
Oh, sure.
Move the mic, thank you.
Okay. I have to give my address, right? 1232 Harding Drive in Havertown, PA, 19083. My question and concern you briefly touched base on, and it is, sorry. It is, when can we consider making the masks optional, like several of the other schools are doing right now? I have many concerns, but my three top ones, which are kind of personal, are, I have a child who's in speech right now, and I feel like she should be way further along. I don't, I don't know how you can teach speech and wear a mask. So, that's a concern. And then, I have another child who is starting to have, like, some anxiety, and today, he actually got corrected because he had his mask down just to take a sip of water. And I just, I don't agree with that at all, especially if you're having anxiety, or if it's even maybe a mild panic attack, we don't know yet. We're going to look into it, but, you know, you need to take a deep breath, you need to drink some water. So, when he told me that, I was really upset, and it's, like, the mask really does bother him. And then my last concern is, I have a student in high school, and he's not talking, and his, his friends aren't talking either, and the teachers are even saying it. They're not asking questions, they're, they're just staring at their phones, like, because that's all they can do, and that's how they communicate with one another, but they're not speaking. And it's, you know, these are high schoolers, they're already insecure, the mask is awkward, they feel weird, and it's just, I just personally feel like it's time to try something different. The last meeting- The last meeting, you said that we would address it. This time around, everybody's wearing the mask, but nothing has changed. So many people were just recently sick. I just feel like we should maybe try, just try it, just give it a shot, just to see what happens, like the other schools are doing. So that's really it, you know? That's my concern, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tuttle. Michael Benty?
I was actually here for something else. But I'm going to touch up on what these guys are talking about. Now, I'm not anti-mask, anti-vaccine or anything like that, but I am anti-mandate. I do believe in choice, right? And I feel like we're going down a slippery path here. You know, at the end of the day, if people don't want to wear a mask, it should be their choice. Now, you want to wear a mask, wear a mask, that's fine, right? But to actually force someone to wear a mask, I'm not in agreements with that. I'm not in agreement to do anything forcefully. My body, my choice, right, should apply to the situation as well. But what I really wanted to talk about is, I came across this book, and I wanted to make a suggestion to all the board members here. It's called Outwitting the Devil by Napoleon Hill. And I was just like really blown away by it. I was like reading it, and I was just blown away, and I just, I just had to come and tell you guys about this book. So some of the things, it made some suggestions about making some improvements in the public school system here. But overall, you know, it talks about how students should be, you know, taught how to think independently. But here's some suggestions. Reverse the present system by giving children the privilege of leading in their schoolwork instead of following orphodox rules designed only to impart abstract learning. Let instructors serve as students, and let the teachers serve as instructors. Teach the students how to budget and use time, and above all, teach the truth that time is the greatest asset available to human beings and the cheapest. Teach children what to eat, how much to eat, and what is the relationship between proper eating and sound health. Teach children to be definite in all things, beginning with the choice of a definite major purpose in life. So these are just some of the things that I just covered in this book. It's a very, very powerful book. And I feel like with, you know, our kids spend eight hours a day in school, and X plus Y equals Z, it's not going to teach you how to be a homeowner. It's not going to teach you about different things in life. You understand? So just something to consider with the curriculum. Always be working towards changing that, making improvement. Outwitting the devil by Napoleon Hill. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett, Benty, good to see you again. I just want to make sure I didn't capture the address, was, it was?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Should I say my address?
We have to, I'm sorry, just for the record.
Mike Benty, 255 North Linden Avenue.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. I failed to ask him to do that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benty. Next is Heather Rainey. She left, okay. Savan Jalosian, I apologize if I'm saying it incorrectly.
Good evening. Hi, Dr. McGary.
Hello.
I have some, I'm sorry. I have some information from Heather. Can I hand it out to you?
You can give it to me, sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Savan Jalosian, 1144 Myrtlewood Avenue, Haver Town. Really, I think I'm going to be a little bit more firmer in my speech from the previous months and, you know, the support I had behind me, but our diplomacy is over. We've exhausted all means with this board. We petition, we show up, we email, we call, we follow up, we speak up, we submit public comments, and we just are at a point where there's no way that we're following recommendations from you, Dr. McGary, for months. You said it was DCIU, then you said it was Chester County Board of Health, and then until Delaware County Board of Health gets implemented in the beginning of this year. It was the CDC, now it's CHOP. So my version of the Constitution starts with, "we the people." It doesn't start with this back row back here, "we the school board." It doesn't start, "we the CDC," "we the Department of Health." It's "we the people." And my eight-year-old son, this is his, this is his daily struggle. When you have glasses on and a mask, you fog up. So honestly, I'm tired of going to Will's Eye every other month with no signs of improvement. So it's either the glasses come off and there's no improvement, thank you, or these come off. And I know the basis, basic principles of this country that was founded on is no taxation without representation. The taxpayer is the one that funds this school. I haven't gone through the general budget line by line, but I know that about 80% of $200 million, I think that comes in, right, Mr. Rogers, is from real estate taxes. It's close to the number, regardless. It's the taxpayer that puts these lights on in these schools that actually pay your, the administration's salaries that fund the teacher's pension. And at this point, we've had enough. I know tomorrow morning, I'm sending my son into school without a mask. Just like the decision has been respected for individuals who continue to mask, they will be respected, and I expect the same. You can push the narrative all you want about vaccination rates, but Dr. McGary, your current email from Friday regarding the social protest that was scheduled for the seventh on Monday, you're looking at the most accurate representation of vaccination rates right now for pediatrics. It's been introduced for the last three months. Correct me if I'm mistaken. Three months, we have time to indulge, I just need like two more sentences, please. We have, we have had time to indulge as parents and make a decision. And if you expect vaccination rates to increase, then you have created an unrealistic and false expectation. I, this is at a point that, Dr. McGary, he will be unmasked. I hope that you and your administrators, whoever's in the building, Ms. Campbell, and will be in the building, I don't want to see them segregated, I don't want them to see separated, I don't want them belittled. They need to attend.
Please wrap up your comments, Mr. Jalosian. Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next is Josh Baldoni. Please state your address, name and address. Nope, not here. Okay. This Audrey, Audrey D. Please state your full name and your address, please.
Audrey Danielle. I will not give my address because I'm at risk of being doxxed as a public figure.
Well, you can't speak if you can't give your address. You have to be, you're not allowed to speak unless you provide your address.
What's that? 1 Lansdale Avenue.
No, that's not your address. You can't give a fake address. Becky Harvey? Sorry, you can't just speak randomly. You have to... Well, then you have to provide your address. You have to provide your address.
Thank you, sir. As per policy, for those who attend meetings regularly, the policy is that you must be a resident. Next commenter, please.
Ms. Buford, that's all we have on this list. Do you have any comments online?
There are no comments on that document at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved, second.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.